All right, welcome everybody. It is a almost beautiful Tuesday evening. It looks beautiful, which is a little warmer. It is April 3rd, 2018, 6:33 PM. We're here for a regular business meeting with the Laramie City Council. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please rise and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Here.
Hanson.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Polikas.
Here.
Shumway.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stoner.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Somerville.
Here.
That is nine present and zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Our next item is going to be a few proclamations. So, the very first one is for Community Cleanup Day. Whereas the City of Laramie residents are proud of their community and enjoy the natural beauty of Laramie, and whereas Laramie and its surrounding area is also appreciated and enjoyed by everyone who visits here, and whereas the community has recognized the benefits of maintaining the pristine quality of Laramie, and whereas cleaning up the city safeguards health, reduces potential fire hazards, enhances the attractiveness of Laramie, and stimulates public pride, and whereas a clean community is more attractive to residents and visitors to live, work, and play in, and whereas the Laramie Community Cleanup was initiated by the Chamber of Commerce along with the Beautification Committee, and whereas the Laramie Community Cleanup Day is an opportunity for citizens and organizations to express community pride and bring people together for a common purpose, to help beautify Laramie for both visitors and residents, and whereas, in addition, the City of Laramie and Laramie Chamber Business Alliance, the Laramie Boomerang, and many others are proud to sponsor this event. Now, therefore, I, Andy Somerville, Mayor of the City of Laramie, do hereby proclaim May 5th, 2018, as Community Cleanup Day throughout the city and encourage individuals, families, neighbors, and friends of Laramie to come out and work together to join the citywide cleanup with the central meeting point at City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, starting at 7:30 AM, and enjoy lunch together behind Fire Station Number One, beginning at 11:00 AM. So, I believe we have Mr. Teeny here today. Thank you, thank you. So, we all know that Community Cleanup Day is very important. It's a really good opportunity to get out and clean a few plastic bags up.
Mayor and Council, thank you. Yes, we want to clean plastic bags up and everything else that we can as the snow recedes. This is a great time for Laramie just to show its pride and our community, but also just to give everyone an opportunity to get together, whether you're doing it with your family, or in a civic organization, or anything else. Just a few reminders, Community Cleanup Day is May 5th this year, if inclement weather happens, which sometimes it does, we're going to move that to May 19th. If you would like to volunteer, or you have a group of people, or an area that you would like to volunteer at, please contact the Chamber Business Alliance at 745-7339. Also, if you would like to grab safety vests or trash bags in advance of the actual event, Brian Forrester, our Code Enforcement Inspector, will be available throughout normal working hours up until the event, and would be happy to get those to you. You can also give him a call at 721-5285. A few times here for everybody, the most important, lunch is served from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, that is if you helped out. And then, we will set up at City Hall, right out here, at 7:30 to 9:00 AM, giving out trash bags and safety vests to anyone who wants to volunteer, and we just encourage the community to go out and beautify our city and work together. So, if you have any questions, you can always contact Brian Forrester at that number, which is 721-5285, and he can fill you in with many more details if you'd like.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all the staff time that you guys put into this, and then multiple departments that put a lot of work into making this event happen, along with the other agencies throughout the community. All the City Council gets to do is cook hot dogs and hamburgers, so.
I just want to mention, it's the Fire Department, basically, that organizes and arranges the lunch, so I think they should be really mentioned here. As you said, they would meet out here, I think they usually meet in back, by the, in front of, on the side of the.
Yeah, usually there'll be some signs here, but people will start gathering up private at all the doors, and we will keep an eye out, and we kind of go around, gather people up, make sure groups are getting out properly and getting to where they need to be, so.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the next proclamation I'm going to do is for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas, April serves as an opportunity to renew our commitment to preventing sexual assault and assisting those who suffer from those crimes against them, and whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women and one in 16 men will have experienced sexual assault by the time they complete college, and whereas, we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors, and whereas, on average, there are more than 300,000 victims of rape and sexual assault each year in the United States, and whereas, sexual assault is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, income levels, genders, and sexualities, and whereas, with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence through prevention education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions, and whereas, in addition to the immediate physical and emotional costs, sexual assault may also have associated consequences of post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, major depression, homelessness, eating disorders, and suicide, and whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention have identified sexual assault as a significant costly and preventable health issue, and whereas, a coalition of organizations such as law enforcement officials, those involved with shelters and hotline services, healthcare providers, the clergy, and other concerned citizens, has emerged to directly confront this crisis and are helping in the effort to end sexual assault. We must recognize the compassion and dedication of these volunteers and professionals, applaud their efforts, and increase public understanding of this important problem, and whereas, only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this crime. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Andy Somerville, Mayor of Laramie, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and urge all citizens to recognize and participate in preventing sexual assault and incorporate this into their daily lives. So, today with us tonight, we have Scott Cheney from the Safe Project, and I'd like to invite him up to say a few words. Welcome.
Thank you. Metamare, Council. My name's Scott Cheney, and I am the Outreach Coordinator and a Victim Advocate with Albany County Safe Project. I am here because April is nationally recognized as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Over the past year, we in our office have seen a marked increase in the number of individuals who have been victimized by some kind of sexual assault here in Albany County and in Laramie. We recognize that in order to address this epidemic and to raise community awareness, that we need a coordinated community response, which is why I'm here before you and why you have a proclamation in front of you. On behalf of Albany County Safe Project and our clients, who have had their lives affected by sexual violence, I thank you for your continued support, and I would like to take this opportunity to invite all of you and everyone gathered here. On April 26th, we are hosting the Take Back the Night March. We will begin at 5:30 PM at First Street Plaza, next to downtown Coal Creek, where we will rally, and at 6 o'clock, we will march as a group down Grand Avenue towards the courthouse, where we will have Cody Jerabek as our guest speaker. We hope to see you there, and again, thank you for all of your continued support.
Thank you very much for everything you do in this community and the good work, and we wish we didn't have to have it, but we appreciate the hard work of all the volunteers that step up and all the organizations. So, thank you very much. All right, the next proclamation comes from the Laramie Disabilities Commission. We would like to recognize a few establishments that have really stepped up in this arena. So, whereas disability in no way diminishes the rights of individuals to live independently, enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, and experience the economic, political, social, cultural, and educational mainstream of American society, and whereas, family members, friends, and members of the community can play a vital role in enhancing the lives of people with disabilities, especially when the family and community are provided with necessary support services, and public and private employers are aware of the capabilities of people with disabilities to be engaged in competitive work in inclusive settings. Whereas, the goals of this city include providing individuals with disabilities the opportunities and support to make informed choices and decisions, live in homes and communities where they can exercise their full rights and responsibilities as citizens, pursue meaningful and productive lives, contribute to their family, community, state, and nation, have interdependent relationships and friendships with others, and achieve full inclusion in society. Whereas, thousands in Wyoming face challenges with disabilities daily. Whereas, in honor of March as Disability Awareness Month, Laramie Commission on Disabilities and Council would like to recognize the following businesses for making their establishments more ADA-friendly. We have Speed Goat, Thai Spice, Laramie Soup Kitchen, and the Laramie Senior High School. I think we got everybody? So, now, therefore, be it resolved that our mayor does hereby proclaim Speed Goat, Thai Spice, Laramie Soup Kitchen, and Laramie Senior High School as ADA-friendly establishments, and encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, religious and educational institutions to join in their recognition. So, our thanks from the Council to these businesses for stepping up. So, I would like to invite first Nick Wiseman, the Disabilities Commission, to come say a few words, and then we'll invite the businesses up.
Thank you, Mayor, Council Members. Thank you to these four businesses and the school. We really appreciate doing your best to make every business more ADA accessible, and we will be doing this in the future, so we hope that other businesses step up and make their places more accessible too. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I would like to invite, why don't you come up here, and I'll give you yours here, so I don't forget. But let's invite, is there a representative from Thai Spice here tonight? Okay. How about Ted Kramer from the Laramie Soup Kitchen? Why don't you guys come on up, and I'll let you pass that up. And how about Raj Patel with Speed Goat? And do we have anybody here from Laramie High School? All right. Anybody want to be from Laramie High School? We will make sure that they get these proclamations, and can you take care of that? That would be great. Thank you again from the Council to these businesses for stepping up and making your establishments ADA-friendly and addressing that issue. It's very important. Thank you for going the extra mile. All right, and our last proclamation tonight is going to be on National Service Recognition Day. So, I think we have some people in the hallway. Might we scoot them in here? Come on in. You can hang out. There you go. Good. All right, so this is for National Service Recognition Day. Whereas, service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas, the nation's counties, cities, and tribal governments are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet their needs. Whereas, AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century, to fighting the opioid epidemic, to responding to natural disasters, to supporting veterans and military families, and whereas, national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas, AmeriCorps and Senior Corps participants serve in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economics and social well-being, and whereas, national service participants increase the impact of their organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers, and whereas, national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas, national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors, and whereas, the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with local leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, Cities of Service, and local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day on April 3rd, 2018. Whereas, national service volunteers currently serve the Laramie community with the Wyoming Conservation Corps, Wyoming Coalition Against Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault, Greater Wyoming Big Brother Big Sisters, Action Resources International, or VISTA, Foster Grandparents of the Wyoming Rockies, Southern Wyoming RSVP, Wyoming Senior Companion Program, and the Laramie Soup Kitchen. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Andy Somerville, Mayor of the City of Laramie, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim April 3rd, 2018, as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our community, and to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities. All right, so Mr. Harrington, invite you up here. If you'd like to say a few words.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. Thank you all for signing this proclamation. This means a world to not just these six that showed up, but I've got a whole mess of national service volunteers in the back of the room, too. These are folks committing, you know, anywhere between 450 and 1,700 hours of their year to do national service, so I encourage you to think of them not as volunteers, but instead as people who are committing their time to serving their country. As you said, we're doing all different types of work here in the valley and across the state, and so, you know, things like this really do go a long ways in legitimizing the work that these guys do, and making sure that the commitment that they're making to their community is paid back by their community. So, thank you all for taking the time to do this, and if it's all right, I'd like to invite them all up for a photo.
Absolutely. Well, thank you again. So, Laramie, I noticed on this proclamation, in the second paragraph, it says that cities are just starting to turn to volunteerism. I will tell you, we fully recognize in Laramie, we've been doing this for a very, very long time. We don't have any money, but we have lots of volunteers, and this city would not run without our volunteers, and so we can't say thank you to you guys enough, so.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Wow.
We have to do the picture. Hold on. All right, sure, people.
There's a lot of us.
There we go.
First time.
There we go. See? That's how it works. Can you tell?
I might not even be able to get up.
Come on up.
Not in the picture.
Just pile in. You guys could do, the first row could also kneel down a little bit, and we can move that. You need to.
You guys, you might have to hold that out. Six smiles.
Patrick, can I impose on you to pass these out?
I should grab those from you, yes.
Okay, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, thanks for coming.
Sorry, sorry.
It's fine.
Hey, we're missing, oh.
Thanks, Nate.
Thank you.
Got one? All right, so we will give everybody just a minute to file out that doesn't want to hang out for the rest of the meeting.
Does that mean I can leave?
All right, so let's move on to our next item. We have some public hearings to do tonight. City Clerk, can you read the notice for the first public hearing for transfer of liquor license number 15 from University Plaza to WRCH?
Notice is hereby given that on the 14th day of March 2018, an application was received in the office of the City Clerk for a transfer of retail liquor license number 15 from University Plaza Incorporated to WRCH Laramie LLC, 2415 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Public hearing to hear comments or protest relative to this license application will be held Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, at 6:30 PM in Council Chambers of City Hall. Action on this application will be considered at the regular meeting of the City Council on Tuesday, April 13, 2018, 6:30 PM in Council Chambers.
Thank you. So, at this time, I will open up this public hearing for any public comments on this specific transfer of liquor license from University Plaza to Wyoming Ribbon Chop House. Is there anybody that wishes to make public comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close that public hearing. City Clerk, can you read the notice for the second public hearing for the renewal of the retail liquor license number 15?
Notice is hereby given that on the 20th day of March 2018, an application was received in the office of the City Clerk for renewal of retail liquor license number 15 for WRCH Laramie, Wyoming LLC, DBA Wyoming's Rib and Chop House, 2415 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, 82070. Public hearing to hear comments or protest relative to the renewal of this license will be held Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, at 6:30 PM in Council Chambers of City Hall. Licenses will be considered for renewal at the regular meeting of the City Council on Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, at 6:30 PM in Council Chambers.
Thank you. So, we'll open this public hearing for any comments on the renewal of retail liquor license number 15. Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. City Clerk, can you read the notice for the third public hearing, a new restaurant liquor license to Jay's Prairie Rose, Inc.?
Notice is hereby given that on the 6th day of March 2018, an application was received in the office of the City Clerk for a new restaurant liquor license number R61 for Jay's Prairie Rose Incorporated, DBA Prairie Rose Cafe, 410 South Second Street, Laramie, Wyoming. Public hearing to hear comments or protest relative to this license application will be held Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, at 6:30 PM in Council Chambers of City Hall. Action on this application will be considered at the regular meeting of the City Council on Tuesday, April 3rd, 2018, at 6:30 PM in Council Chambers.
So, at this time, I'll open this public hearing for any comment on the new restaurant liquor license to Jay's Prairie Rose. All right, seeing none, we'll close that public hearing. Move on to our next item, which is announcements. City Manager, do we have any announcements tonight?
No announcements.
Okay. So, I have one announcement, as usual, for this year, for our 150th birthday. I'm going to read a very short section of very old ordinance that was approved May 26th, 1884, on immoderate, immoderate riding. Did I say that right? Immoderate riding, okay. If any person shall immoderately ride or drive any horse or other animal in any avenue, street, alley, lane, or thoroughfare within the limits of the city, every such person shall on conviction be fined in a sum not less than $5, to be payable to the city marshal and all police officers. What about that? And it shall be lawful for any person to stop any persons or persons who may be immoderately riding or driving, as fore-said. So, apparently, you could pay your fine to the police officer, and anybody could stop them if you were riding immoderately. I'd like to see that. I don't know what riding immoderately is, but all good fun. Okay. Next item is item number five, disclosures by City Council Members. Do we have any disclosures for tonight? Seeing none, item number six, Vice Mayor.
All right, I move that the following change to the agenda be approved. It's on the regular agenda, and we're going to delete item number 10.
Do we have a second for that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
I move that the agenda be set as indicated.
You have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor.
Okay, I move that the consent agenda be approved, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stoner. City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. So, we will move on to item number 11. All right, Counselor Stoner.
I move that City Council approve, this is the transfer one, sorry. I have them both up. I move that City Council approve the application for transfer of retail liquor license number 15 from University Plaza LLC to WRCH Laramie LLC, location 2415 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term April 3rd, 2018, through May 7th, 2018, as well as allow minors in the establishment, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. City Clerk.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a transfer of that liquor license number 15 that has been parked for a couple of years. This is a full retail license. It's being transferred to the new Ribbon Chop House, or the application is to transfer to the new Ribbon Chop House out in University Plaza, near the new theater. You will also notice that they are requesting to allow minors in their establishment, as they don't have sales from last year, to fill out our form that is now required, to allow them to have minors, so they don't have that normal avenue available to them. They are, we're doing a special item as far as having Council approve this one, based on their business model and their anticipation of what their sales will be, and what their sales generally are in their other locations. So, that is why there's that additional language on that one for you.
Questions for City Clerk on this license? All right, thank you. Are there any comments on this transfer of ownership of this liquor license? Seeing none? Okay, Council, any discussion on the transfer? City Clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Stoner.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That is nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item number 12, Counselor Stoner.
I move to approve, the City Council approved the renewal application for retail liquor license number 15, WRCH Laramie LLC, DBA Wyoming's Rib and Chop House, 2415 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term May 8th, 2018, through May 7th, 2019, as well as allow minors in the establishment, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, I have no additional comments. It's just if Council has any other questions on this renewal.
Any questions for the City Clerk? Okay, thank you. Counselor Hanson.
Just have a question. Normally, an eating establishment would apply for a restaurant license, wouldn't they? What's the situation here? Because they want minors, of course, to be, they are, since this is also an eating establishment, is that correct?
Your Honor, Counselor Hanson, we do have several eating establishments in town that also have retail licenses. It opens them up to be able to do catering, alcohol catering, so it gives them a wider variety. They can have the full bar in their restaurant, so Applebee's is an example, Altitude, Chop, or, you know, Chop House is another example, where it's a full retail license, even though it functions very much like a restaurant.
I seem to remember that then the bar section is off limits to minors. Is that correct?
Your Honor, Counselor Hanson, sitting at the bar is off limits.
So, this will, this will apply to this place as well.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments on the renewal of this retail liquor license? Okay, any discussion by Council? City Clerk, roll call, please.
Gabriel.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway. Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, your honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Onto item number 13, councillor Schuster.
Thank you very much. The title of this is a new restaurant liquor license, Jay's Prairie Rose, Inc. I move that the city council approve the application for a restaurant liquor license number R61 to Jay's Prairie Rose, Inc., DBA Prairie Rose Cafe, 410 South Second Street, Laramie, Wyoming, for the licensing term of May 8th, 2018 through May 7th, 2019, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. City clerk?
Yes, your honor, this is a new application for a new restaurant license. This is for Jay's Prairie Rose down on Second Street. You'll notice that the licensing period doesn't start until our new licensing year starts, so that's why you're not gonna see a renewal on this one, because they're starting after, in, or into the new license year. They weren't in a hurry, so they thought that was a little simpler, especially since they were coming in a little bit later to the application process for that. It's a standard license application, license restaurant application, restaurant liquor license application where the alcohol will be stored in a storage room, served out of a storage room. There will not be a bar or anything set up in the establishment.
Any questions for city clerk? All right, thank you. Are there any comments on this license application? Okay, any discussion by council? City clerk, roll call, please.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, your honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. All right, let's move on to item number 14, councillor Gabriel.
Thank you, mayor. This is Resolution 2018-27, authorizing inclusion of the downtown clinic in fiscal year 1819, community partner program. The council approved Resolution 2018-27, authorizing inclusion of the downtown clinic in fiscal year 2018-19, community partner program, originally authorized via Resolution 2018-24, with an award in the amount of 488889, and authorized the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. City manager or city clerk, does anybody wanna make any comments to this?
Um, mayor and council, I'm happy to stand for questions. I think fairly self-explanatory, if that's okay.
Yep, absolutely. Any questions for the city manager on this? All right. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Any discussion from council on this item? City clerk, roll call.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, your honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. All right, we're cruising along here. Item number 15, councillor Hanson.
Oh, yes. Sorry, I was sleepy here.
We were cruising.
Now we are lost. I lost the file. I lost the file. Okay, it's item 15.
15.
There you go. My computer just died. I move that council approve original ordinance, 1982, original ordinance number 1982, amending Title V of the Laramie Municipal Code 5-09- or period 010, definitions, 509350 malt beverage permits for special events, 509355 catering permits for special events, 509800 point system for alcoholic beverage licenses, violations and suspensions on first reading.
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. City clerk?
Yes, your honor, this ordinance is bringing just a few revisions suggested to you. These revisions will help the clerk's office and the rest of city staff to administer these permits regarding the malt beverage and catering permit section. It will help us to have some clearer and cleaner definitions and guidelines to work by. And then in the last section, there are a couple additions to the point system that are recommended. These are two areas in which we have a bit of a loophole, where there are no, there's no points and availability to assess points to an establishment for these two different situations, both of which are a concern. So that's all it is. I will certainly take questions. It's pretty straightforward and upfront, but can certainly give you more information if you desire.
Questions for the city clerk? All right, thank you. Are there any comments from the public on this? Discussion by council on this, first reading. City clerk, roll call.
Okay, Hanson. We're doing roll call, sir. Yes? Okay. Gabriel?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, your honor.
I'm gonna bring Girl Scout cookies tomorrow. All right, item number 16, councillor McKinney.
Move to approve the original orders, number 1981, on third and final reading. Rezoning five parcels of land from LM Limited Manufacturing to B1 Limited Business with the ROB Residential Overlay for Business and establish ROB Residential Overlay for Business overlay on one parcel of land based on findings of fact and conclusions of law, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the ordinance.
Second.
Second by councillor Schuster. Mr. Tini?
Mayor and council, very briefly, I brought this item back onto the regular agenda just to provide you the public comment that was received, which doesn't happen very often at third reading, but it did. And so I felt it was important to bring this to you just as a regular item. That comment was from the Turner Track Office Park Association. As you all know, and as you recommended, that we as staff take covenant changes to them. And during that discussion, there was just some basic general discussion also about what the implication was of the zoning ordinance that's here before you. As you'll see in the staff report, I kinda noted the few general comments, really centering around large multifamily development maybe being a concern if the whole cul-de-sac went that direction. Regardless of that discussion, the covenants were recommended for change, although that's not what we're dealing with here. But they wanted that comment to be passed along to you, just to be conscious of that as they, as we move forward as selling land and doing development in that area. And so that is all. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Tini on this? Councillor McKinney?
So are they asking not to take the whole cul-de-sac, multifamily living, like apartments?
No, that comment wasn't made. It was, it was more just to be conscious of what type of development we actually put in there, and that if all of it maybe being residential might not be the best thing. It wasn't said, no, don't do it.
Did they have any suggestions?
Uh, no, that was not suggested.
Councillor Hanson?
I have just one question. There are two maps attached at the end. And for the life of me, I cannot tell the difference between the maps. They are trying to designate something, but I looked high and low, and I can't find the difference. I, my eyes are not good enough, I think. But what was the purpose of these two maps? Probably previous and now what it'll change to? Something like that, but it's all the same.
So, mayor and council, the first, the first map that you have there is a map that shows five of the lots that are being rezoned, or being established with the B1 and Rob overlay.
Correct.
The reason why we did two maps is because if you go to the second map, actually, the one lot there is, only needs to be zoned ROB, because it's already zoned B1. So we did that in two maps, just to clarify which lots were receiving the B1 ROB and the one that were just receiving the ROB.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and, so it's that LM and the, well, no, it says both of them say LM. Which, which one is the one? This one here is already B1. So these are being moved to B1 with Rob overlay and just a Rob overlay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions for Mr. Tini? Any other questions? All right, thank you very much. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Please come forward.
Can I borrow your map, please? All right. Um, mayor, city councilman?
So when I'm looking at this map with the comprehensive future land use, with like the mixed use thing, like, so like, well, what would be like the concerning of, where would this be located, like the development? Like, where was the, where's the cul-de-sac located, like on the map?
The, the cul-de-sac is on Crystal Court.
Okay, yeah, but.
By the rec center?
Yeah.
Oh, by the rec center, Turner, Turner Track.
High Altocle C, yep.
Right.
Right, right. I know development in that area, I don't think should be a big issue in that area, 'cause I know most of the newer houses in that area, or most of the house, some of the houses in that area, Turner Track, are fairly new and are pretty accessible to locate. They're trying to. But where I think, one, the point I'm trying to get is that I don't think urbanization or development of families or some, should be a big issue for that area, 'cause, I mean, you got the high school, the rec center, workforce services, I think should be pretty easy for students in that area, for people in that area to get around.
Thank you. Can you introduce yourself for the record?
Oh, I'm Sam Berg, resident of Laramie.
Thank you, Sam. And if you can sign the sheet behind the clerk on the table as well, that would be great. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
All right, any discussion by city council on this item? Councillor McKinney?
Is this final reading then?
It is. Yep, this is third and final reading. We moved it to the, from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, just so that we could hear that public comment from the association.
There was no objection.
No, there's none. All right, city clerk, roll call, please.
McKinney?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, your honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item number 17, councillor Shumway.
Thank you, your honor. I would move that the council move to appoint councillor and mayor Andy Somerville as the official voting delegate, and councillor Klaus Hanson as the official alternate voting delegate for the 2018 WAM, Wyoming Association of Municipalities Summer Conference Business Meeting.
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. Is there any public comment on this item? Any discussion by council on this item? I hope lots of people come with me to Pinedale, John Klaus and I. City clerk, roll call.
Shumway?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That is nine yeses and zero noes, your honor.
Thank you, that motion carries. Item number 18, councillor Polikas.
Thank you, mayor. I would move to open discussion regarding possible resolutions for the 2018 WAM convention.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. All right, discussion suggestions on resolutions that we would like to take, prepare and take forward for WAM to consider for the legislative agenda.
So I have a comment. So you could remind all of us that, that basically, this is our one chance, so.
Yeah, absolutely. So this is, the, the way the process is set up for WAM is we have this pretty much one chance to submit resolutions to WAM for the board and the, the body to consider during the summer convention. And whatever resolutions that are passed by the, the whole body of cities and towns is what will make up the legislative agenda. Doesn't make it up in its entirety, I should clarify that. If there is legislation that is brought forward by legislators that comes up, obviously, WAM will take a position on that. But as far as being proactive, if there's stuff that you guys want WAM to get after and do or advocate for, this is it. This is our one shot to set it for the year. Councillor Schuster?
Um, do you also already have a small list of recommendations?
I didn't bring, I have a list in my head. I didn't bring out a specific list, I thought.
I just wanted to make sure previous things that were talked about are on that list, or if we need to, excuse me, start again.
I think we should just start again on what, what you guys would like to see. Councillor Hanson?
Thank you, your honor. I made the suggestion already last time, and I did not work up a resolution that the, we have been exhorted by the legislature to find means for financing our operations in a more robust way than simply by the, our sales tax. And for that purpose, the city would need to have a better or water, later taxing authority, which the legislature has not granted us, because we have really no way of raising any taxes. That's the prerogative of the state legislature and has been kept that way. We only have a few taxes, franchise taxes, that we have a possibility of raising, nothing else. And if the legislature desires for us to become more independent, the legislature will need to, or must needs, give us more authority for taxing on different items than is possible at this point. Thank you.
So that, that's definitely, I thought, probably the most important one, revenue independence in some fashion. Question I have for council would be, do you want to have a general resolution that calls for some type of revenue generating authority so that cities, including Laramie, can have some independence from the state and be able to maintain operations without state money? Or do you want to list specific things like, I just drew a blank.
Lodging tax.
Lodging tax, alcoholic tobacco taxes, you know, those kind of things. Do you want to list those specifically, or do you want to stay general?
I would like to at least explore or introduce a suggestion to the state. We have something similar to in, income, increment financing, where if the state increases, like this last year, they had almost a billion dollars on the Craig Report, that's new revenue, and also almost a billion dollars in their investments. As they increase, as the state increase, is there money to work with for the state? I would like to have, you know, a portion of that be earmarked for communities. Because when I began on the city council, the state was, state annual budget was a half a billion dollars. Now it's three, three and a half billion dollars and going up to four. The city of Laramie was getting 32 million dollars from direct distribution, now we get 28. And I would like to have it to where as they increase, we get a portion of that increase that's earmarked for the cities because it seems like it's easy to just have the state legislature say, this is our money and we're going to distribute it with our formula. I'd like to have one where there's some kind of an agreement that as the state increases their portfolio, the portion of that would be then expected and anticipated to flow to the, to the communities.
So.
I don't know that that's ever been considered, but I think it's fair.
We, we talked a little bit about raising the cap on severance, mineral severance tax a little bit, but that's a little bit different. This would be more, I think what you're describing is a statutory diversion.
Right.
Okay.
Not that I'll get much traction, but it's good to open the discussion.
Throw lots of stuff out there. Other thoughts?
I guess in terms of a resolution, I think the broader we keep it at this juncture, I think the better, the better it will be so that once the session is going, we can see potentially where traction might be moving on particular issues. So I think broad is good now, specific, you know, nine months from now might be, might be a good idea.
Council. Thanks, Mayor. Just to add to that, we could also just leave it general, but say such as and list a couple examples to maybe give people a feel for what we're talking about.
We could easily pull those out of the WAM finance reports that we've kind of written and already started some of those discussions would be a few examples.
Can I have a second?
Please.
Have we thought about what our legislative reaction is going to be to ETJ?
To what?
To the extraterritorial jurisdiction bill.
Yep. We have not. I would like to address that through a resolution. I don't really know what. I'm imagining that I'm not the only one feeling that way here or at the conference, so.
I imagine not too. Okay.
Your Honor, wasn't there, what we heard at the last regional meeting, a statement that the legislature would have to discuss this further?
They, they do not have to discuss this further. There's nothing still pending in front of the legislature in terms of extraterritorial jurisdiction. I think the statement was they most likely expect to discuss it further.
Okay.
Because they don't think that the cities and towns are quite done with this conversation, so.
They are.
So.
Your Honor, one more financial matter, there was discussion in the legislature, sort of a fledgling discussion on a fifth penny to make that a regular penny on the state's sales tax. That discussion apparently didn't go anywhere as did not any other item that had to do with taxes or money, but I think WAM should at least exhort the legislature to pick up this discussion and discuss it seriously because the current situation just doesn't fund us enough. And in connection with that, the question, of course, arises if the fifth penny is allocated the way the first four pennies are allocated, namely that we only get 30, whatever.
Thirty-one percent, yep.
Thirty-one percent of it, that is a, that would be a step backwards because right now on the fifth penny, we get 99%. So this would have to be discussed in connection with this so we don't step back and all of a sudden on the fifth penny only get 33% instead of the current 99%. So that's a caveat that would have to be added to that. Thank you.
So.
Yeah, please.
Just going a little bit backwards on what Counselor Stoner was mentioning, you know, I suspect that there will be some campaigns coming forward, perhaps discussing this issue, given the fact that roughly 70, 80% of the population in Wyoming, they live in municipalities, so, as opposed to the rural. So I think, for example, if I were running for an office, I would seriously consider if the bulk of my representatives were city or municipal residents, I think I'd bring this up as some sort of campaign issue. And I think depending on the, the person and the location of their particular campaign across the state, I think this might make it a pretty hot button. Hot button issue. I, I can't imagine this sliding under the radar of folks looking to run for office in the state of Wyoming. I think, I think it's, has the potential to be.
A big issue.
A big issue. And if, if it's not, it certainly should be, and constituents in municipalities should be asking questions, how do you feel? Will you help us reform or redo or, or whatever? Because it's, it's not, I think it could very well be contentious and.
I definitely think, you know, from a WAM point of view, this, this issue is going to come up. I think it'll be discussed. I would imagine we probably won't be the only city to, to send in a resolution asking for some kind of action and follow-up and to make it a priority on the legislative agenda. So I think we can feel pretty confident in that. There was one other thing that I wanted to bring up in terms of funding and it's kind of dancing around a little bit, the revenue and the fifth penny piece. So this year, we actually did have a bill that would have made the fifth penny permanent, would have increased our share of the state sales tax with the purpose of getting us off state direct distribution so that, that that wasn't a requirement for us to basically provide services. So I was pondering a resolution requiring WAM to go after a, basically some type of equal and acceptable is not the word, but necessary funding level for basic services for cities to provide. And equality is a big word in Laramie because we are so underfunded compared to a lot of other cities and towns. So I would like to pursue that. Again, it's kind of come up over the last few years and bubbled up and I think it's an issue, especially in the smaller towns. They're also really facing that, you know, we can't provide services for $169 per capita. It just doesn't work. The state has, has kind of taken this issue on in terms of like community college funding. They always fund over in school districts, you know, they try to equalize out so that people are receiving, receiving equal services. So I'd like to, I'd like to send that in. Counselor Stoner?
Thank you, Mayor. To ducktail off of that, I was going to bring up the idea of reevaluating the Madden formula and our distribution of that, which sounds.
Similar to what you're saying.
Connected.
So maybe we can put that all in one resolution and kind of tie that together. Okay. Counselor Shumway?
Well, something that concerns, I think, all of us is the viability of our airport. For some reason, we've gone from three essential air service cities down to two and Cheyenne has lost all air service. And through YDOT, there is an aeronautics portion of that that is funding airports. I would like to have something there that would have a formula that says essential air service will be financially supported or somehow so that we, there is no worry that 10 years from now, we're, we're just going to have to be out there on our own trying to find an airline that will come in. Because right now, I think all air services in Wyoming is, is supported through federal support and also through the state. Somehow we, I'd like to at least explore the idea of making sure that there is, is provisions, state statutes that guarantee that there will be support financially for essential air service in, in Laramie. Where's the other places?
Cody.
Cody? Yeah, Laramie and Cody. I think somehow we have to have that in writing because it'd be easy for that to be one of the things that they would tick off and say, we can't fund that this year.
Didn't in the Endow report eliminate EAS airports?
No.
No. So EAS is a federal program, so the state can't eliminate it. So.
No, no, but I mean the state giving money to EAS airports. They kind of danced, if I remember, they danced around it and they, go ahead.
They talked about it a little bit in terms of with the state, so the airport enhancement program, so a piece of that did make it through the legislature and there is money in aeronautics for two, Riverton and Rock Springs, a few other areas, get and maintain air service. It's similar to an EAS program, they're just not, they just don't qualify for EAS. The conversation with EAS airports for Laramie and Cody was, were they willing to spend state money? If we had EAS money providing two flights a day, should we be able to go get state money out of this program to make it three flights a day? And so that was the piece that kind of got dropped for right now and, and in that. Now, we could do a resolution kind of supporting this initial push at supporting air service through this, this bill. One of the problems with the bill that just passed is that it's, it's self-limiting in the amount that it was funded. There's a very small amount of money, I think only $10 million in this account, and there's no further appropriation beyond this unless the legislature acts to fully fund or to further fund it into the future.
And Laramie's zeroed out because we have the EAS.
Right, but they really targeted only three or four. So we could, we could put in the resolution some support for EAS and airports and expansion of EAS flights.
Or just a different distribution.
Or distribution. So it's a, a sing, right now, they're pursuing a single contract to service Rock Springs, Riverton.
Jackson?
No, it wasn't Jackson, it's mine.
It wasn't Cody?
It wasn't Cody. Cody's EAS, Sheridan, Sheridan. I think that was the other one.
It was Sheridan.
Yep, I think it was Sheridan. So, because Gillette and Casper and Jackson and Laramie and Cody were the ones that were eliminated from the program. So, okay. Anything?
And ours, because of our boardings, we get good from the federal government, so they don't consider us as that needy airport.
No, they consider, because we qualify for EAS.
Above 10,000.
We, we actually are doing, we're, we're considered a pretty successful airport right now. Vice Mayor?
On a completely different subject, stormwater drainage as potential enterprise fund?
So the, the catch with that right now, statute says it has to go out to the voters. Do we want a resolution that says council can approve that?
Oh, that's interesting. Yes, or something similar. I mean, even though they'll probably say no.
I know, city manager has been working on this issue extensively for, with stormwater, so.
It certainly would be better coming from Cheyenne than.
One, one thought, many times stormwater is funded through grants and things like that, but once it's built up, then it's maintaining that. Without a, without that falling under a enterprise fund, it would be almost impossible to maintain and build out a storm system. So somehow we've got to get language that says existing or, you know, improvements would be funded through an enterprise system.
If I could just, you know, some of my discussions with Chris Roffus, Roffus, he was very supportive of this, so I can't imagine him being alone in that. So there might be some.
This, this did come up.
So might be some momentum somewhere.
There was a bill this year that came up, it just didn't, didn't go very far. I think it died on that first Friday, Friday afternoon, so. Okay. Anything else that we want to consider?
I, I can, okay. You know, when we were at NLC, one of the, the hot topics was the opioid epidemic. And, you know, I, this is so out of my range of knowledge, but I'm just wondering, you know, how is Wyoming on that spectrum? And do we need to address that at some? I mean, and I don't know the answer to that question, but because it was such a hot topic, I thought, am I completely, you know, in the dark on some of these issues and do we need to address it? And.
I would hate to provide inaccurate information, but I believe during this session, so there was a bill that was sponsored by President Bebaut for opioid epidemic task force.
That's right.
And I thought, it passed, right? I thought it passed. Yeah, so I think the state has allocated some money to start, start something. I will follow up to make sure, but I'm pretty sure it passed, so.
The marijuana and all of the, you know, the imitations of marijuana were just simply put aside. They, they decided that they didn't understand it?
Yes. They wouldn't do anything with it, yep, nothing passed.
Sometimes.
Because like how much pot's in a cookie?
Right now, two thirds of the United States have policies regarding marijuana and all of the things that are similar. We've got to, somehow we've got to jump on this so that we can at least have some legal status when it comes time to enforcement. Because right now, we're, we're in the dark. We're, we're, we're working on stuff that's 20, 30 years old when, you know, our police are really being handcuffed by not knowing what to do and how to do it other than just the way they did it before.
Any other resolutions that we want WAM to take a look at? It's a pretty good list. Council Hanson?
Thank you, Your Honor. There was at NLC a multifaceted discussion of college education versus education for, what does you call the trades? And that nationwide, we had probably gone off in the one direction, you know, just furthering and promoting a college education, an academic education for the majority of folks in, at the expense of an education for trades. And there were examples mentioned of other countries that have gone on the two-track road. And since we are in the, having the problem of funding our educational model right now, whether this, the state should entertain really the promotion of trade education through the community colleges. The, the, for example, L triple C is trying to do things like that at this point, but whether there should, there should be a state effort to have that kind of a discussion of a two-tier educational system towards the trades as well as a university education since the university education at the secondary education, the primary education system is so expensive anyway at this point, whether we shouldn't promote the other one as well. I don't know, again, how to put that into form of a motion, but that's something I think that would be worth discussing at the state level because it's happening in other states at this point.
And, and certification.
Yeah, certification.
So much certification now is supplanting college education where a person, you know, is looking for the ability to get gainful employment right away. And certification in trades are a huge jump because many times people end up with, you know, with a four-year degree and a great big student debt, but really know where to go with a degree and.
Counsel Shumway is expressing much better than.
So my, my only question is, remember, these are resolutions for WAM, so do we want WAM to be the one to take up this cause as the lobbying organization? It might be a little bit out of their wheelhouse.
I would like to take that kind of a different venue. What happened this year and they kicked it out, I don't believe they ever introduced it, but they were talking about equal distribution on all counties to fund these types of schools. Because right now, it didn't go anywhere, but right now, if somebody from, I'm going to use the word Rollins, if somebody from Rollins decides to go to L triple C, L triple C, Laramie County people are funding part of his education. So what they were kicking around is saying, okay, we're going to take all these community colleges and anybody from Wyoming that goes to one, whether it be Casper, L triple C, Sheridan Community College, that all counties would kick in the same amount. So when they do go there, all. So when they do go there, all counties would be then funding it at the same amount.
Right.
And I thought that was an excellent resolution, and whether it helps different organizations or not, it'd still be a good record, a good.
We can certainly bring something forward for councils to take a look at and approve. That, that was brought up. It gets brought up every year or two in the legislature. It's a pretty recurring topic. I just, for the council's knowledge, my, the information that I was given is that the community college system will come up for recalibration in three years, I think is when they will start all of that discussion on recalibrating and how much goes, how much money goes into the community college pot. So I'm not sure if the legislature will take it up this next session or, or not, but we can craft something for supporting higher education and funding.
I mean, I think from, from a city perspective, you know, I think the way that we can kind of shine a bright light on this issue is just mentioning the unequal distribution in general of how the state has managed some of its funds. So counties with community colleges have a mill levy. Counties with branch campuses or smaller campuses have no mill levy, which is basically what Counselor Schuster was saying. And it's a, it's a flipped, it's a, it's an unequal taxation type, type situation dependent upon what county you happen to be a resident of, which is not unlike the distribution of funds to municipalities not being based on population, which if the community college structure were based on population and taxed on population, like the city funding or municipal or county funding should also be based on population.
Sure.
So I don't think it's necessarily a thing that WAM should enter into, but it's certainly a bright light of, of unequal formulas running amok.
Well, we've certainly been put more in the spotlight on this discussion with Wowtech and LCCC coming forward.
Exactly.
So I'm not entirely sure how WAM would, would work or take this up, but let's see what we can put together. The council might be able to just support a resolution standing on its own to go to our legislators and the, and to the community college commission, you know, that this is a priority and that this is important for the city. It may not be the best, best thing for WAM to pick it up, but let me, I don't know, can I have some flexibility on that one to look at that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Anything else for the list? Counselor Stoner?
I'm gonna throw out an idea that will probably be dead on arrival, but I'm gonna try it anyway. I like the idea of Laramie bringing the concept of the state enacting a statewide nondiscrimination ordinance. It's gonna be the twentieth anniversary of Matthew Shepard's murder. I think it would be appropriate for us to bring up that idea, even if it doesn't go anywhere, so our municipalities doesn't have, don't have to spend time doing it individually. And it would be a great symbol and economic driver for the state.
We've had several cities that have passed nondiscrimination resolutions following our ordinance.
Yeah.
Most of the big ones.
But no actual ordinance.
Yeah, we're the only ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay. That actually did come up, that came up at WAM two years ago, whether we wanted to push that as a statewide initiative, so that'd be an interesting conversation to have again, now that some of the cities have actually passed their resolutions. All right.
You might, is it the Wyoming Equality?
Yep.
They might want to send some information to the WAM conference.
We're different.
They're different.
We have similar sounding names.
But there might be some good lobbying on their part might help at the convention.
So if I could just recap kind of what I've heard, definitely a resolution on revenue, city and town independence, potentially a statutory diversion if state money improves, then requiring a certain amount to go to cities and towns. The revenue, probably one resolution that includes the independence and the equal funding for basic services and the Madden formula kind of all wrapped up into one. Something to support the fifth penny, local government, which I think WAM is gonna do anyways, so I think that that is good. Resolution on ETJ, something about the, the air service supporting EAS airports and distribution, can, asking WAM to continue its work on the stormwater stuff, which I think that they will anyways, and the nondiscrimination ordinance. And then we have the higher education stuff for me to work on. And then I'm gonna throw out one more, one more bomb that has come up in discussion, and that is payment in lieu of taxes for state properties.
Wow, would that be cool?
So, we're not the only city with state properties. Cheyenne is our, Cheyenne is our buddy in this.
Wow, would that change our outlook.
That would change the whole outlook, so I don't know how far it'll go. Probably DOA, but.
Yeah, most ideas are.
The fifth penny was the caveat.
That it's local government. Only, yes.
It should, you know, the fifth penny should not replace the fifth penny we have right now.
Right.
Because then, then we're stepping backwards.
Right, right. No, it has to be a hundred percent for local government or ninety-nine percent.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. That is a good list.
That's a really long.
Actually, most of this, I think most of this stuff will be pretty easy to write because we have so much stuff on it already.
Backgrounds.
So, yeah, it'll be, it'll be pretty quick.
It'd be interesting to see what else comes back and how much.
Yep. All right, so let's go ahead and close the discussions for that and move on to item number nineteen, which is public comment on non-agenda items. Come on forward. You can introduce yourself for the record, please.
My name is Scott Cheney. I was wondering if I could just offer a comment regarding the WAM convention to all of you.
Yes.
I'm here on behalf of the Board of Directors of Wyoming AIDS Assistance. We are relatively new official 501(c)(3), but we have been operating in Laramie for nearly twenty years, hosting the annual Drag Queen Bingo event. Our event, our sole purpose is to raise money that we then give away to people in Wyoming living with HIV and AIDS. The WAM convention for the past two years has sponsored legislation on the regulation of bingo events held by 501(c)(3)'s. The overall goal of this is to go after the big entities who are posing as nonprofits, who are pulling multimillion dollars in these bingo events, essentially gambling under an illegal guise. However, the way that the legislation has been written for the past two years is it lumps in all of the legitimate nonprofits, to where our event, it would require that we give away fifty percent of our revenue, which over even just the past three years is over one hundred thousand dollars for our organization, less of a difference that we would have been able to make. So we ask, as you go to the convention, to encourage them to host conversations with legitimate nonprofit organizations in the state who host bingo events, such as Wyoming AIDS Assistance, Wyoming Equality, AARP, and the Catholic Diocese, who do these events to raise money to better our communities. So thank you. Yes.
Can I ask you to stick around for about five minutes?
Sure.
Just finish this?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Or is there any other public comment tonight? Uh-oh. Hold on, you're next.
Go for it.
No, please. Come on up, Sam.
Can you turn it over again? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I think Counselors, Mayor and Councilmen, Counselor Stoner, you brought up a great point with Shepard's, with Shepard's death. It'll be the twentieth anniversary coming up in October. Next week is the Shepard Symposium on Social Justice, and I'd just like to say that I think that this, this is a big symposium. I think this, this one, I think, is gonna be even bigger than other years because it's been twenty years since Matthew Shepard was killed with the nondis, with discrimination and hate crimes. And I think with the WAM convention, I think with this, this shouldn't be like a statewide thing. I think this should be a nationwide thing to promote the nondiscrimination on the LGBT community. As being a student for the last, I graduated in December from the University of Wyoming, and I, I just found in the last, every time the Shepard Symposium came up, I wanted to get as much info as I can to prevent the discrimination on not just the LGBT community, but all minority communities.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I encourage everyone, not just in this room, but anyone in, anyone in the Laramie community.
Thank you.
To come to the Shepard Symposium next week. It should be great talks. I'm gonna be there taking notes.
Great. It's a wonderful event. Thank you very much.
Just give me five minutes.
That's probably close enough. It's rather amusing to me that I spend more time talking to some of you than my own mother, and I still get a little bit nervous when I come up here. First off, as a reporter, I'd like to, to let you know that, that yes, the opioid epidemic is coming to Albany County, and keep an eye on those headlines because we've got a story coming out with some actionable data about how that's affecting our community. Secondly, I'd like to take off my reporter hat and as a very well-informed resident, say that if I were to read about municipalities in Wyoming addressing that epidemic, considering that this epidemic is unlike this country has ever seen before, this is, this is not street drugs. It's turned to street drugs because of decisions made at corporate levels far above our heads. But it's affecting people that we've never seen affected by a drug epidemic. And if I were to see municipalities address this epidemic, what I would as a person and a resident like to see municipalities address is treatment options. This country has more than enough criminals, and I don't think we need to criminalize those who have, from what I've seen, fallen victim to trusting medical diagnostics. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. You have to sign the sheet.
Oh, I see. I can't decide.
You get to sign the sheet. We want it on the public record that you have to sign the sheet. All right, let's go to item number twenty, consideration of future, future council work session topics. So I have one to suggest in regard to the data that we received last week, a work session reviewing all of the WASCOP data, Wyoming Association of Chiefs and sheriffs, they're the ones that pulled that data that we got on the resolution, in terms of, of relationship to alcohol establishments and incidents and arrests, to start, just start that conversation on if there's something we need to be looking at or doing or ways we could address that. Is that okay? All right. Other suggestions for work sessions? Any other requests? All right.
I have a quick comment, Mayor. I just wanted to bring up, I don't know if we have a time for comments, I don't think so, but the Standing County Commission City Breakfast that happens on the second Thursday of.
Of every month.
Every month at seven, I just want to make sure we get that. I've forgotten about it the last two times, so whenever we do calendar things, I just want to try to get that back.
Okay.
Incorporated.
Maybe, would it be helpful, well, we can't really do it on the public schedule, I'd say, can't put it because it's not a public meeting, but we'll try to figure out a way to make it. Touche. I have a hard time remembering it, so. Okay, let's go to item number twenty-one. Counselor Hanson?
Thank you. I move that council adjourned to executive session regarding litigation, Wyoming, paragraph sixteen, dash four, dash four oh five, A, Roman numeral three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Schuster. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we are adjourned to executive session regarding litigation.